City Council meeting, regular meeting is agenda on Thursday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. In person preparation, participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic public participation is also available. Members of the public participating electronically and wish to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom, use number nine to raise and lower your hand. Use number six to mute and unmute your phone. You may submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to the deputy city clerk before five P M. On the day of the meeting, email public comments will be distributed to City Council and made part of the official minutes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfelder?
Yeah.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Here.
Mayor Ackerman? We have a call.
Lights, please. Public comment under provisions of the California Code.
Approval of the city council. Yeah.
Approval of the city council regular meeting agenda of May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. We have a rule.
I think that city manager Roberts wanted to make the comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On item seven, three, I just wanted to clarify that tonight we're not going to be taking any action on the item, but I would like to start the discussion on as possible scope change. And at the next meeting, we'll hold a public hearing and take more public comment. We will take all public comments tonight into consideration. And then we'll take the public hearing next meeting into consideration. And at the next meeting, we'll take the vote on the resolutions that are on tonight's agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the recommendations of the city manager.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Passes. Under provisions of the California Code, the city council citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing a speaker submittal form to the deputy clerk or following the instructions noted on this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence.
Yeah.
Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it is to be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Public documents related to an item on the open session portion of this agenda, which are distributed to city council less than seventy two hours prior to the meeting shall be available for public inspection at the time of the meeting. Yes.
Ask if the public.
Uh, yes, does it? Anybody in City Hall have a thing to say?
Um, first of all, let me apologize for not registering and doing the appropriate protocols to um provide just a really brief update, if I may, about um the status of where we are with the Veterans Park uh build out, if I can. Uh, for uh the record, my name is Jim Wise. Um, I'm the chairman of the Veterans Park um uh committee. Um, uh, wanted to just uh 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 tell the council and to tell the community at large where we are with regard to the build out of Veterans Park. Um, the um granite slabs that we had ordered uh that will house the names of all of the veterans from District Five who have served in one of the military branches have now been um received. We have those granite slabs here. We um are not uh at a point where we're going to do the engraving of the men and women who have served in the military branch and who will be honored in the park as yet. We're still uh validating and verifying the eligibility of uh about eight hundred individuals uh from Amador County who will be honored um in the park. But um but um the and incredibly, the granite slabs have arrived three uh of the four months earlier than what we had anticipated in terms of all the um the delivery um and uh delays that have uh uh developed on a worldwide basis, but but they're here. And uh we're uh we'll be going down to Stockton to just inspect the slabs to make sure that they meet our qualifications, our needs. We are continuing to move forward to validate the names of all the individuals that we have received uh to be eligible to be um honored in the park. We'll be meeting with the residents um uh behind the park to talk to them about um the materials and and the construction of the wall that will separate their residences from the park itself. Um, we um are um uh in the process of accepting on on a uh philanthropic basis um the materials um that well we can use in the park um uh for a contribution to the park at no cost to the committee, to the city, to anyone for the building of that wall. We're meeting with the individuals um that um have some uh um opportunities for us to provide the materials for the bridges uh over uh the um um a a royal ditch uh that will pride the bridges back into the park. Um, so um we're in pretty good shape about moving forward um with um the next phases of our construction and our development of the park. And um the two things that I just wanted to um really amplify um and to do to reach out uh for uh for tonight is if there is any individuals um out there that believe that they have friends, family, relatives that um should be considered for inclusion for those names that we should honor in the park. Please let us know um of those folks that um are are from our area of Amador County um so that we can ensure that we include those names on the park. And again, for any individuals that are still interested in providing um a contribution to our efforts, we still need to create a ongoing fund that will provide the maintenance um and the support for the park for all the years um of moving forward. Um, so this is a dynamic park. It's a dynamic process. We need your names, and we also would really appreciate any financial support that you may be able to provide. And uh we uh will um uh provide ongoing updates to the council uh for this city park um as we meet uh every new phase and stage of uh the build out for the park. So that um on behalf of the committee, um uh they've asked for a little bit of an update for you.
Hey, Jim, I just got one question for you on the names for the park. Do we just contact the Rotary? Do we contact someone at the Rotary? Um?
Um.
Do we contact you?
Yeah. Yeah, you can contact me. There is actually um a link um on the city's website to the park itself, which would provide access to any individual that has a family member or friend or somebody um who provided military service um to our country, and they could uh provide those names through the city's website. There is a link on that. Um, and we'll be doing an outreach. We'll be um going back out to the local our local radio station, and we'll be doing an outreach to the ledger newspaper to um uh 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 deliver the same message that I'm delivering to you tonight. Um, uh, and this is uh like um a little bit of a segue and and maybe it's um um non-German, but I also want to just mention um on Monday, Memorial Day, we will be having um a s- uh a ceremony, a service in the park starting at nine o'clock um that will provide a little bit of an honor for um um all of the individuals uh that have similarly provided service to the country. So at Veterans Park um on Monday, nine o'clock in the morning, uh there will be a lovely Memorial Day service as we did last year. Um, and I'm I'm hoping that the community come out and uh support that service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in City Hall have thing to say? It's not the agenda?
I have something after Margaret, too.
Hi, Mark Roberts, your city manager. I'd like to introduce you to our newest employees. Um, this is Kelly Witt, our new administrative assistant, your deputy city clerk. And this is Curtis Cantwell, one of our newest maintenance workers. And I hope when the public sees them out and about, they will welcome them to our city staff.
Welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Keith White, uh Victorian Way resident. Um, I would just like to give a huge thank you to Public Works. On Tuesday morning, I was trying to irrigate uh Victorian Way. Uh, and I had to track Shelby down at five or six forty five or whatever. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the city staff. They came by throughout the day, was checking on me, so I appreciate it.
Fixability.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Go to Zoom.
Yeah. Anybody on Zoom? Have any comments?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, my name's Amy Gomes, and I'm a resident of the city of Plymouth. And I'm speaking tonight for two reasons. Uh, one is to thank the members of the community, the mayor, um and council members that supported the Plymouth Playground reopening effort. And I wanted to highlight the success of that collaborative um effort. Now, it seems we often only communicate when there's an issue that gets the communities back up, but I wanted to thank the people that supported the community in this effort and hope that we can work together as collaboratively on issues in the future. Um, secondly, we wanted to petition the city to get something in writing that details the agreement made between the city and the school district. Uh, recently, the district has stated to us personally that we are promised to have the playgrounds open to members of the public that use the grounds for their health and recreation on after-school hours and that do not abuse the privilege. Um, there's a standing agreement with the fairgrounds that they get to use the playground property uh at times, and of course, this would not apply to those times or when emergency services use the property. So at this time, the school district was amenable to conceding. However, Plymouth is the only city in Amador County that school sites remain open to its residents because Plymouth was the only city that spoke up on its residents' behalf. Um, with that being said, school administrators, elected officials, and residents with background knowledge on this topic will change over time, and this compromise could be forgotten. Uh, so to conclude, we are petitioning the city and our elected officials to come up with an agreement in writing that will act to preserve this arrangement made between the city and the school district for future residents and the children of Plymouth, and I hope that that will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? On Zoom? Yes. Yes. Turn your mic on.
Could you state your name, please, for me? Thank you.
This is uh Amy White, and I'm reading a letter from uh Denise um from Monarch Montessori. Uh, Denise and Bernard Moreno. Firstly, we would like to thank the council in advance for hearing our comments and questions. We would be in person tonight, but may but you may have already noticed the crowds in the town. We are holding our forty-six second annual promotion and graduation ceremony across the street at the beautifully groomed Plymouth City Park. If we were to attend in person, would we? We would be followed by forty grads in blue gowns under the age of five. And that's why they had me come over here today so that I could read this letter. She wished she could be here. It has come to our attention today on May twenty fifth that for a lengthy period, the city has had funds for the C D B G program grant designated for use by businesses affected by COVID. We are glad to know that our council is on top of applying for funds to better our community and services in the Plymouth area. Monarch Montessori preschool is located just down the street. We are eight doors down from the city hall. This is the first time we had any knowledge of any such possibility of support for our business, where we serve at least forty families yearly for over forty-two years. Denise serves on the Amater Childcare Council as a private representative and has always been made aware of funds, grants available, but they are always serving subsidized students. This always leaves our full-time working families and facilities like us out or without a minimal grant money. I'm sure you can shed light to our qualification or not. The city and its management of loans and or grants available can be a lifeline to our small city businesses. We depend on transparency and work on our behalf. Many businesses have closed in our area. Could these type of funds have helped them? We were saddened that we're not notified notified of the possibility of even applying for these funds. What did COVID do for us? We discovered we needed better ventilation. We purchased some air purifiers as we could afford, split doors and purchased items to separate children as best available. Children during COVID were undeserved in many cases. Daycares were closed. Also, parents worked at home, so children were in their care, while parents did the best to work and care for them at home. Children entering preschool for the first time these days are developmental younger, requiring program modifications, materials, and even more staffing. One school is not the right fit for all children. We appreciated the five thousand dollar grant that the city gave to us about two years ago. We boasted and told everyone in our little town of Plymouth saved us. We were able to do to keep homework reproduced for drive-by pickups and our rent paid. With all our staff on unemployment, we made it, all while we were closed. Our hopes for this community of businesses is simply this. Support us as we are as part of the city of Plymouth. We do our best to comply with your needs from us. And please, uh, she just wants to know a little bit more of that that money that's available out there for uh for anybody and businesses that were affected by COVID.
Um, Amy, it's it's agendized as seven point three.
Uh huh.
And I understand that we won't be taking any action on to that tonight, but I'd like the letter to be entered into the record.
Yes.
For the next meeting when there's a public hearing.
Okay, and I have some copies. Is it all right if I leave those here with you?
Yes, or mark it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, just to remind you, uh, general public comment should be used for items not on the agenda. So just, you know, as a reminder, I know that you're new to the chair tonight, so.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment.
I would probably stay for the record. Oh, she disappeared.
No, please.
No, I was gonna say our mayor uh was on Zoom there for a minute.
Oh.
Oh.
You're still there? There, yeah? Yep. Okay, um, I presume there's no uh uh proclamations or appointments? Uh, going to the uh the cap- the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on the motion to adapt. Members of the council, staff, and the public request specific items to be removed from the count- from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action.
Um, Vice Mayor, I would like to pull item five point five and have you agendize that wherever you would like to.
Okay, all right.
Uh, sorry, sorry to interrupt. This is Mary Ann. I I'm not sure if you guys can hear me, but yes, I I'm here. I can hear you all. Um, I'm on Zoom from my phone and trying to figure out how to make this work, but I'm still here and I can hear you, and I should be at City Hall in about twenty minutes and uh again, for for the interruption.
Okay, so remove us uh five point five. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar leaving out five point five?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item five point five?
I second the motion. Any public comment?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember, oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Motion approved. Public hearings, non-regular agenda items. Uh, seven point one, consider an agreement with Accra for pool management for the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, begin June the first two thousand and twenty-three in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. City Manager, do you have any report, please?
This is the annual contract with Accra to run the pool for the summer. Um, twenty-four thousand dollars is the amount not to exceed. It's basically reimbursable fees that Accra spends to run the pool. And Justin Howard with Accra is here. If you have any questions for him.
I do, yeah.
And um it is limited to total compensation, and they can't, like I said, they can't go over that twenty-four thousand dollar mark.
Uh, Justin, do uh do we know how much we spent last year?
Uh, last year, I I believe I I'd have to check for the record, but I believe it was like twenty thousand, I'd say.
Those, yeah, yeah. And and how many employees are do you employ for the pool?
Uh, we have
Normal day?
Uh, we have uh two lifeguards this year and one pool manager. Um, and the the contract also includes uh workers' comp and uh administrative uh an administrative fee um on top of that, just for the work being done, um sort of non-pool hours related things to get the pool going.
How many pools does Accra uh manage in the in the county?
Uh, three. Plymouth, Sutter Creek, and Ione.
And they all pretty much uh come in about the same dollar amount?
Um, roughly. Uh, Plymouth is the lowest amount uh in terms of the contract, but they're all within ten thousand dollars.
I see.
Yeah.
Um, I forget, who owns that pool? So is that is that state? State owns it or Ploton?
Plymouth owns the pool. The state owns the land.
Correct.
Okay.
So essentially, it's a management contract.
Sure.
Uh, which is uh which is laid out in agreement. It says it's uh almost identical in language to past agreements that uh allow us to operate the pool, hire guards, uh count those revenues against the the bill to the city each month, and each invoice uh has a backup as to what those charges were as well as what the revenues were.
Oh, typically, when does the pool season end? When school starts?
When school starts, uh, based on availability of staff, we go to weekends only through Labor Day.
Presume some of the staff is are are students.
Yeah, I'd I'd say, yeah, seventy percent, I'd say, are overall are still in high school. I have a few college students that are able to stick around before they have to go back, usually at the middle part of August. So usually, if we can, if we can have a few lifeguards around, we can keep keep the pools open through Labor Day on the weekends only.
Who maintains the sunshades over there that cover the grass area? Is it?
That would be the city.
City.
Yes.
She does that?
Yes.
Oh, I have. Anybody else have comments?
I would like to understand the process for determining the fees that are being charged.
Um, in terms of the daily passes and season passes. Uh, so so those amounts uh stayed the stayed the same way for a long time uh last year. Uh, we sort of did an analysis just of what those, you know, what those what those fees were versus kind of what labor was, so we adjusted them accordingly. So that's how we landed on the the fees from last year, which are carrying over into this year.
Is there, do you, do you have any inclination that the fees being what they are may reduce the the level of um activity at the pool that some people cannot attend? Because if you've got three or four children, a five dollar fee a person a day for them is a lot.
We 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 did not have any any feedback um of that nature last pool season. Not saying that it didn't exist, but but certainly nobody uh reached out to to staff to to let us know.
Well, it's my, it's my concern is is that the residents of Plymouth are paying twice. Three times. We maintain the pool with our staff. We pay for a contract to have staff there, and then we charge them at the gate. So that's my concern that I just want to throw out there for everyone. Um, I've I've mentioned this in previous years as well. It's it's not a surprise that I'm pretty unhappy about these fees, so.
Uh, certainly, I I would say that uh the perspective of uh of Accra managing the pool, those fees are uh are being counted against the bill for the city. Uh, so of course, uh, the city of Jackson, for example, is uh is managing their own pool this year. In past years, I know the city of Sutter Creek tried to, and it's uh the cost effectiveness of it is generally uh less cost to the city to have. less cost to the city to have Accra handle the administrative function, the payroll function, and the management of the pool. Uh, but we are counting those revenues against the bill. Um, and, and that's why we, I'm proud to say the number hasn't really changed in terms of what the city is, uh, is reimbursing. Um, and maybe that was helped by the fee structure as well.
Well, I appreciate the explanation, but I don't think that that solves the problem for the residents and taxpayers.
I, I tend to agree with Valerie, however, we're at the final hour, so we don't have much time to negotiate in, any, any change whatsoever now that we're, we're gonna begin this program June 1st. Perhaps, uh, this will be saved for another day, but, uh, but thank you for your.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate council, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I got a, I got a, a few statements, questions, the whole bit. Um, I truly believe this pool is just as important as keeping the locks off the playground gates. Um, I know how important it is for our community. You, you mentioned something and we brought up that who owns the pool. Jackson owns their own pool, correct? Sutter Creek, the high school owns that? And I own the junior high or the school district on those two pools, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, with both of those two pools, was the city and both those ci, are, are both those cities, are they helping finance?
Yes, it's, it's a same contract.
Same contract, okay. Um, with, he's also being applied to the counties. I know as a kid in Fiddletown growing up, I used that pool just as much as any Plymouth kid did. So, uh, has the county, have they offered to step in at all?
Uh, in terms of contributing for?
Contributing for funds on, on.
Uh, no.
I, I mean, I, I gotta agree with Valerie and Doug. I mean, I'd like to see that pool open to every kid that's under 18 and with no fee. That's just my opinion on it, you know, and I know that's tough. It all, it all takes money to run things. Trust me, I totally understand that, but, um, that's just my viewpoint. I know that there's a lot of families that can't, if you got four kids, you gotta pay 20 bucks a day to get in that pool.
Sure, one day.
Yeah.
Right, definitely understand.
You know, so that's just a, you know, I wanted to state it for the record. That's just my opinion on it. You know, I mean, it would be nice that if, uh, you know, the county contributed a little bit for our district, you know, in each district that one of these pools are in or whatever. But that might be a, another talk that I can have with our supervisor.
Yeah, and.
Pay a little more money.
Yeah.
Even if we had increases 24,000, these kids don't have to pay money again, I'd be for that as well.
I would say that, uh, it doesn't solve the, obviously the concern, but I know, uh, in past years, uh, past, past city councils had proposed the idea of a, uh, uh, towards the end of the season, uh, free, free swim day for, for the city of Plymouth and essentially we would, we would invite the city of Plymouth in and we would, we would do a headcount that, uh, we would find some sort of agreeable amount on the backend with the city. Uh, obviously, it doesn't solve the issue, but it's at least something that.
What about a free swim day, once, one free swim day a week?
I mean, the, the problem, the problem with that would probably would end up on the shoulders of, of the city of Plymouth at that point, right? That amount would go up because essentially that's 20% of, of our days. Uh, but I'm definitely open for a discussion, uh, uh, moving forward on, on maybe a discussion with the, with the county as well.
There might be some, some ways we could get some sponsorship money from various companies in the area that we would, we'd be happy to put some money in towards this program to relieve these kids not having to pay $5. I think that's could be one thing we could, we could talk about.
And I also, because I've been a bear about contracts and, um, reports at the end of contracts. Are we getting a very detailed end of season report that identifies all the funds that have been requested and paid? I asked for that, um, about two months ago from Justin, and I did get a full report on all of the expenditures for last year. I did get a full report. And I've been working on this contract and trying to get changes to the contract since then. So I, I've been trying.
Are you, are you satisfied with their accounting?
Um, from last year?
Last year?
Yes. It, all of the accounting that they gave me balanced with what we paid them. I'm not happy with this contract either. But it's what we have.
It's what we have, right? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, council.
Uh, Doug, I, I have a Vice Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Justin.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's okay. Um, first, first of all, I, uh, I, I, I think that my colleagues on the council have, have made some very valid points. So thank you all for raising, raising those points. Um, Justin, just a couple of quick questions that are a little bit, um, uh, well, anyway, I understand that there's lap swimming before the general session in the morning and then again in the evening. Is, is that something new or is that something that, that has always been offered?
Um, the, the idea of the, the lap swim pass is, is not necessarily new, but, but actually having it at all the pools for one hour before and after rec swim is, is new for this season. So we're hoping it opens, opens opportunities for, for new swimmers that, uh, would maybe not use the regular rec swim and then hopefully those revenues will help, uh, against the city's bill.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think that's really a nice addition, um, of a, of a activity to offer. And then, uh, one last question, um, uh, what about, is, is there any chance that water aerobics might be able to be brought to Plymouth? Um, and I, I know I'm off topic a little bit, um, and I understand you've, you've got some challenge, uh, staffing challenges that you need to work with on that, but, uh, any updates on that?
Uh, yeah, so we have a, we do have a water aerobics instructor that's, uh, that's gonna be teaching twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, to start at the Sutter Creek Pool, just based on his preference. But he is definitely open to the idea of expanding that to the other pools if there is interest.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be nice for us to find out from the community how much of an interest. And, and typically in a water aerobics class, how many people can participate?
Well, he's, he's deemed the, he's looked at the three pools and he says probably a maximum of the way he teaches 10, uh, 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's, that's all I have. Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Uh, is anybody in City Hall having to say regarding, uh, 7.1?
Apologies, if I may, um, and Justin, thank you for that report. That, that's very terrific. Um, um, I find this really troubling that we may have some, um, youth in this, uh, community that can't access the pool because of maybe a lack of funding. And, um, and this may not be a data point that we could collect so easily, but if I could ask, um, if can we know what we may need to ensure that every kid in this community that wants to swim all summer can swim? And I will make an overture and offer that we'll go out and find a funding source to ensure that those kids can do this. Here's my challenge to the city right now.
I think that, um, a small application included in the water bill that goes out every month. It could provide, um, a survey information, initial survey. And then if we get, based on that information, if we got enough information that we wanted to move forward with it, forward with it, we could also at a future date include an application. So I don't think that's necessarily gonna work this year. But that would be my goal, is that taxpayers' property paid for by taxpayers gets used by the taxpayers. And, and the kids who were supposed to be what we're doing everything for don't have to pay.
Well, sir.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Sim, if I may.
Remind.
Yeah, I think there's been, you know, really some, some excellent comments and I, I fully agree. I think what I'd be curious of knowing is what is the total cost to, to operate the pool for the summer? We know we're being asked for 24,000, um, of city money to help, you know, provide for the staffing, but what's the delta between, you know, that's covered through the, the gate? So I guess we have an understanding of the dollar figure. And, uh, my second for consideration could be a resident versus non-resident, where if you're a resident of the city of Plymouth, you're able to swim for free. If you're not a resident of the city of Plymouth, maybe there's a, a nominal fee just as a, an option. But I'm in full agreement of finding a way and if we're not able to do it this year, I think it needs to be certainly a priority of getting our arms around this and, and figuring it out for next year.
Thank you, I.
Do we, does Justin or, uh, Margaret, do either of you have what the total cost is for the, you know, providing?
Councilmember McLaughlin, last year it was between 20 and 22,000 to run the pool.
And, and that's what we paid or that was the total cost including the, the gate receipt revenue?
That's what we paid Accra. I don't know what the.
Well, they're a nonprofit, right?
I don't know what the pool gate fees were.
Okay, so they. So we assume their cost, you're less than that.
Uh, council member, I could, I could certainly find that information in terms of what the total operating cost was, uh, to, to find that delta that you're referring to. Obviously, that's the amount that the, the city reimbursed back, so we'd have to add on the revenues, uh, which I'm, I'm guessing were probably between, uh, 4 and 6,000. So maybe it was, uh, you know, 26 to $30,000.
Hello, John, yes?
Hi, Doug. I was just curious, uh, we, we have, uh, impact fees for recreation and, and there's funds there available. But, um, I would suggest that we, we, uh, I've always, uh, been concerned about the pool and the city having the full responsibility maintaining it when it's a, a regional, um, recreation facility. And so I would, you know, put a request in the county and see what, see what happens with it. But the other thing I was wondering about is, is there a, a way of, of, uh, the general public participating in some of the burden? Is there gift certificates available? Could I go down there and buy $50 worth of five dollar gift certificates and give them out to kids or have them give them out to kids? Or is there any, any way that the, uh, local citizens can get involved in supporting the system?
Um, and along with what we talked about the survey, we could create a sponsor, a family. Um, and so if a family qualified for that and, and someone wanted to sponsor a family, it's like little, an angel. Who, like, an angel? So I think so, it's possible.
I might have missed something somewhere along. Is there a, a, an annual fee? Can you get a membership for the whole year?
Yes, there's family pass.
And what's that normal fee on that?
The family for the year? For the whole year?
Yeah. Or for the pool season?
This pool year. Yeah, all right. Anybody on, uh, on Zoom? Let's talk about the pool? Nope. Okay. Pardon? Okay, go ahead, Stephanie.
Um, yes, um, thank you. I, I'm really pleased to hear that the council, um, would like to find a way to make the, um, pool free um, for the local kids. Um, I want to suggest that one possibility, um, for additional revenue might be if you considered renting the pool to private events like, uh, birthday parties or whatever on off days. You might be able to generate some income from people. Um, they typically do, um, a lot of families do spend money on renting a venue and that could be an additional source of income. Um, but my question is, um, uh, this agreement doesn't contain any kind of budget in it to show how much money is going towards salaries, how much is going towards, um, uh, other supplies and how much is going towards admin. Um, typically in, in a government services contract, you might see that, especially since both sides are government entities. Um, so I'm asking that, um, for the next year at least, that there be an itemized budget in here so the council could see. But for tonight, I'd like to know what the admin percentage is. Um, I didn't see it in the agreement itself. Typically, agreements have a cap on how much can be charged for admin and I just would like to know how much Accra is charging on percent admin on, um, the, the invoices that it's providing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do we have an answer to that question?
The answer to that question was, uh, 10% admin.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, the Accra pool management for the summer of 2023, beginning June 1st, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $24,000.
I make a motion to enter an agreement with Accra for pool management for the summer as written.
I second that motion because of the timeline, but because of the concerns of the council and the citizens. Um, and I especially, uh, like I, um, appreciated, uh, Ms. Marino's, uh, wanting a full budget on the cost of everything for next year. Um, I definitely, I would like note of that taken.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelder?
With a great deal of reservation, aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda, number 7.2, writing a letter regarding action alerts from League of California Cities regarding fentanyl use and signing into Assembly Member Quirk Silva's endorsement letter regarding the state budget as it relates to homelessness and affordable housing.
This is an item that the council asked to come back to them tonight. Uh, the items in your packet are the alert actions that came from Councilmember Kleinfelder and the materials that backed up that item. And this is for the council's discussion and direction to staff.
I think it's important that we, um, maintain awareness about what's going on in Sacramento and not just be aware, but on behalf of our constituents, be a part of it. Be a part of the government. So that's, I'm gonna keep sending action alerts.
Uh, well, we kind of, we did counsel first.
Yeah.
You wanna go?
Um, I've, I've spoken about this before with regard to the, the fentanyl. Um, it's a subject unfortunately I'm too familiar with. Um, so I want to thank Councilmember Kleinfelder for sending these action alerts. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to read them as quickly as possible. Some of the, the fentanyl ones I was already, um, uh, aware of. And, um, I'm, I'm just gonna give my little pitch here for, for why, um, I, I, I can't give you the nuts and bolts on each one and I don't claim to be an expert on any of these. But, but just to give you all some context, one of these, uh, one of these pieces of legislation would, um, for, for somebody in possession of a, of a large amount of fentanyl, there would be, um, an enhancement added to the penalty. We already have those enhancements with, um, heroin and cocaine. So this, this brings, uh, fentanyl up to those standards. Um, and it's anywhere from if somebody's in possession of a kilogram of fentanyl up to the, I I for- I forget how much, how many kilograms. I mean, I want to say like eighty or something. So I've seen them out. Um, the the more you are uh, in possession of, the the longer your sentence would be. And just to give everybody some perspective, a kilogram of fentanyl, um, about two pounds, um, could wipe out Amador County and then some. So sometimes it were, we're a small town, a small city. Sometimes do we think that some of these things might not impact our city? And this absolutely could. If 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 anybody in town had a kilogram of fentanyl, that's that that's insane. That's just insane. Because such a, it seems like a small amount, two pounds. It's not. So there's, there's my pitch on that. So again, thank you for for bringing those these to our attention.
There's been some key things that I've heard tonight, and, um, I just wanted, uh, and this is strictly my opinion, um, but I want it on the record. We talk about Sacramento, other areas. Our public needs to wake up. It's here in our county. Um, it's Jackson. It's it's I own. It's it's here in our county. Um, and I I hate how issues have to be solved. Our our problems have to be solved after the problem's already there. Of course, uh, hindsight's always twenty twenty, but, uh, if we don't take quick action on this right now, um, I I I don't know what to do. It's it's actually one of the things that affects my mental health on a daily basis. It's something that crosses my mind on a daily basis. And, um, it it's, I don't want to say it's scary or or those people or anything, though. I just want to say that, um, it's sad and it's time for compassion. This is a very, very, very evil, evil drug.
I'll I'll add something, you know, San Francisco is having a huge problem with it, to the point where, uh, Mayor Breed has called in the governor to come in and assist with this problem in San Francisco, mainly in the tell, in the, uh, Teneron area. He he met with her about, uh, two weeks ago, and he's going to commit the, uh, CHP and the California National Guard come in and try and put a, put a stop this 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 situation. When, uh, a city like San Francisco with as many officers they have and so forth, uh, they they, I'm not saying they gave up, but they have, they they're they're out of ideas. To bring the governor governor in to address the situation is a big deal. Anybody else have anything to say?
Okay, I'll add one more thing. Um, as a country, I don't, I don't think we can arrest our way out of this. But having, uh, this criminal justice piece when it's a appropriate, um, is, I think, one facet of of combating this problem. I'm all for prevention and treatment. But anybody with a kilogram of fentanyl, they're, they're, they're dealing it. That is not for personal use.
I'll look it up to, uh, City Hall. Does anybody have? I'm sorry. Oh, Mike?
All right, yeah, we're just, uh, I was just gonna say, you're looking through this this legislation, you know, I'm in, I'm in full support of, uh, submitting, you know, i- if it's a council's wish to submit a letter of support and in support of the the, uh, legislation for the fentanyl. It's great to see that going forward. Yeah, as for the homelessness that, you know, requesting a funding piece to the mayor revised budget, it's just seems I guess insignificant as opposed to addressing the whole. So I'm a little more neutral on that, but certainly fully support us, you know, submitting a letter of support um, for the the legislation proposed to address the fentanyl crisis.
Thank you.
Um, the the budget request from the League of California Cities for the three billion dollars is for, this is a number that came up from the League of California Cities from the surveys and recognition of all cities in California. And I know that we don't have people sleeping on the steps of City Hall, but many cities do. And the solutions are not easy. They're not cheap. And they're not without, um, problematic issues like drugs and mental illness. So three billion dollars over out of this budget, as large as this budget is, I think they pared it down to, um, something that they felt could could help the state. But that's just a little bit of an explanation of why.
Anybody, City Hall or on Zoom, have anything to say about seven point two? If that's okay, I will say, I, will somebody please, uh, make a motion?
Make a motion in support of writing a letter regarding, um, action alerts from the League of California City regarding fentanyl use and signing on to Assemblymember, um, Quirkin, uh, Sylvia's endorsement letter regarding the state budget as relatives to homelessness and affordable housing.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
And Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Motion passes five through.
Well, we've we've tabled, uh, seven point three. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Yes, uh, yes, any, uh, any, any discretion in in City Hall regarding seven point two?
I just want to remind the council that we're not going to take any action tonight. We are just going to discuss the possibility of changing the scope. Uh, this, this was originally three grants, and they were awarded in two thousand twenty. Thank you. Um, we originally gave out, um, twelve business loans for five thousand dollars each. Um, HCD determined when I submitted the work that none of them were eligible for reimbursement to the city. And we did give out some loans, I mean, some grants for utility payments um, during COVID. Those were also determined as unreimbursable. The funds were returned to HCD by me. They were returned originally by Kathleen, and then we took them back. And then I returned them. Unbeknownst to me that I couldn't do that, I took the funds back. And so we have the funds back, and the thought is that we can bind them. They have to be tied to COVID. So the thought was that we do the fire station because they're first responders and the nearest health facility is in at, in Jackson. And because our fire station is ground out so often, medical assistance from an ambulance with paramedics is often delayed. And so our firefighters are treating patients for long periods of times. And it could be COVID patients. And so um, in talking with HCD, they said that they could pitch that, and it would probably be an allowable um,
Expenditure.
Expenditure. So that is what idea I am coming to the council with. I don't want to work further on the idea if the council doesn't think that is something that they want to spend the grant funds on. So I'm, want to take public comment tonight, and I want to take council comments tonight and put those all together, and then come back at next meeting with the public hearing and take more comments and more council discussion and direction and resolutions. And get this tied up so we can start working on the grants because we do have deadlines of two thousand twenty four. So we need to move expediently, but thoroughly and within the CDVG guidelines.
Well, that money did a lot of traveling.
Okay, the, um, the business loans that were issued during the first year of COVID were, had never come to the council as part of the CB two or C and CB three business retention grant. They came to the council as a business expense out of T O T and that w- was allowable and then possibly forgivable loans. So we did several five thousand dollar loans, which were all forgiven. Um, but that what that link and that nexus never existed between this grant and that money. So this money nothing was done about. Um, and there were timeframes that were there were timeframes when the expenditures were supposed to be allocated, and most of them were during the height of COVID, when the businesses really could have used it, um, to to stay in business and keep people employed. And the whole thing has, uh, I think everyone here knows um, really broken my heart. So CB one is due, the new deadline is February twenty twenty four, and the CB two and CB three, the new deadline is October twenty twenty four. I want to see something done, but I don't want it to be in a vacuum. And I think from the very beginning of this, it has not had the public process that it deserved.
Count, uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter, when you say that it's due by the dates that you gave, what do you mean by that? That the 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 money has to be spent by that, by those dates?
Yes, wrapped up probably quite a bit before those dates because final report would be due.
Okay.
Um, I was told by HCD, February and October.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret, uh, you, you, we have the money and
So reimbursable grant.
So you said the money came back to us, meaning that the 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 ability to get that money has come back to us, not the money itself. We don't have the money in our account. We have, we have to
Correct.
We have to sp- spend it and show that we spent it and
Correct.
So that 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 takes time, obviously.
Yes.
Uh, pleasure. The money, we we apparently have spent money during this COVID period, and this money that you were talking about right now has nothing to do with the money we spent prior to receiving these funds or the ability to get the funds, right? Do we know how much money we spent that we got prior to this, this 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 part of money we were talking about tonight?
Well, I'm not gonna go deep, deep in the weeds with it because it's not on the agenda, but I had rewritten the USDA Rural Development Grant that was supposed to be for an educational process for youth employment. And when COVID hit, we rewrote the scope, and it was to deal with COVID. So we were able to get the sales, get lights, get heaters, um, and assist with business um, businesses, primarily the restaurants staying open. So and that was twenty thousand dollars.
But that was USDA?
Yes.
RD money?
Yes.
Anybody want to, uh, participate in in discussion in City Hall?
It, if I may, Vice Mayor Sim?
Sure.
The, um, you know, I think there there's a, some important elements I think that are important to bring up, you know? In this particular case, you know, this grant money was awarded in in twenty twenty and, um, you know, under a previous administration. And I I think we can all agree that the work that shouldn't have been done wasn't done. Um, and and now we find ourselves in, um, in a position of trying to recover from that and navigate our way through it. You know, I know that the the city manager, our current city managers worked, um, diligently on this grant over the past few months in working, um, in submitting proposals to housing and community development to try to find um, anything that they would approve, you know, some of which, um, some of the ideas that had been submitted to HCD are included in the the Facebook post that's been circulating, and basically HCD said they will not approve anything, um, of that particular, of those types of grants because they're not directly related to COVID. And this, you know, and and with it, you know, businesses aren't currently suffering COVID closures and some of the other challenges um, that go with this that just make this thing exceptionally, um, difficult, right? It's a, it's a, it's a challenging, um, situation. We're blessed with the opportunity that they've allowed us to continue to have access to the funds, but what we can spend it on is a very narrow scope at this point, which is ultimately the challenge that we find ourselves in. And I'm I'm looking forward to the the feedback we receive from the community tonight than in the subsequent meeting with the public hearing.
Mike, that was very well put.
Uh, and and I want to add, um, and show some appreciation to both you, Margaret, and Valerie for working on this. Um, I think this has been a challenging and frustrating situation. Um, we somehow are are in a position now that is perhaps less than what what, less than what we would have liked to seen it at this point, but but nonetheless, here, here, here we are. How do we? How do we move forward and 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 right this ship for for this particular grant? And then, um, uh, you know, lessons learned for all of us. Um, some things out of our control right now, things that have happened in the past. Um, so there's, there's lessons learned, and, um, I can only hope that um, I I'm in in encouraged that we have you here and your your leadership and, um, people on our council that are uh, much more knowledgeable about grants than I am. Um, so I'm appreciative, appreciative of the cumulative um, efforts, knowledge, and that sort of thing. So, thank you.
I'm I'm gonna say something I probably wasn't going to. Last year, I was fortunate enough to serve as the mayor of this community. And I got to, for better or worse, um, have five city managers during the year and COVID. I spoke with four of those city managers regarding these three grants. And I must have said RFP till I was blue in the face. So I want to see something done with the money. I I have I've gone to the mat to keep the money here for for Plymouth. But we've got to do something that includes the public participation. And 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 we have to get better at that in the future. If we don't have and we also need to recognize that if we do not have the in-house capacity to do monitoring, administr- To do monitoring, administration and implementation. And even grant writing. Then we need a consulting firm that is aware of the things that are coming through. In federal and state funding. We need to be able to rely on people to assist us. In what we decide is the vision and the future and how those things can be funded. It, that's how it works is you decide first. But you have to be able to implement and right now, I I'm. It, no matter what we do with these funds, I'm gonna be a proponent of an outside consultant for the administration.
I would agree with that, Valerie.
Okay, um, can we move on? A public comment, thank you. Anybody have a a comment on Zoom or in the in the? City Hall?
Hello, Bill Clapoff. It seems like we're just a day late, right? Like, we just haven't spent them. I've heard of potential clawbacks coming right from the state and federal government on unused COVID funds, so. Not sure why it's taken this long. I don't know about the, uh, like having a consultant. I think the city would probably bear that cost, right? If we had.
Built into the grants, there's a thirteen percent administration. And as quickly as this could be. If we, if we decide to do something that can be quickly initiated, implemented. That thirteen thousand would probably cover it. We should consider covering it with our CDBG reserves or some T O T if it goes in excess of that. Because it's better to spend a little bit of ours and have two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Of federal and state funds.
I totally agree. If that's capable, I don't know how quick that is. Given it's a twenty twenty-four deadline, right? So we're like, we're knocking on the door right now of twenty-four, so. Just to get an RFP and get, you know, evaluation acceptance, you're talking, what, four to six months, which puts us in twenty-four. The other thing is, um. You know, I don't see a lot of alternatives, right? Like, there's a lot of chatter out there on social media, but I don't see a lot of alternatives, so. And maybe, maybe, um, the city manager has gone out to other entities to see what's been approved. That may be an option. You know, other small towns like ours. What have they gotten approved? And maybe use that as a baseline to what we can potentially run after. And it, yeah, I just think it may be too late, unfortunately. But at the same time, if there's any way we could possibly use it for something. Like the fire station, that makes sense to me, right? That's a, that's a health and safety issue. That that protects every citizen within the city of Plymouth. Right? So it's like if. If if you can, if it can be used for that type of funding and we we have experience from other entities where they may have done the same thing. I think the citizens would support it with lack of other options at this point, right? Because we're just too close to the deadline, so thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who's on Zoom, please? Amy Gomes, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, my name's Amy Gomes. And I'm a resident of Plymouth and I'm speaking tonight in support of keeping the CDBG CB one and two funding as originally awarded. Meaning that over the fifty-six thousand stays allocated to the subsistence and COVID nineteen assistance program. And I support the other two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars staying allocated to the business recovery program as originally awarded. In the last two days, I've spoken with over a dozen Plymouth businesses, all who had no idea these funds were available to them. I don't wanna place blame here on where the ball was dropped and I honestly really don't care about that. What I want is to to do is to get the money to the people that it was meant to help. Each business I spoke to had a different financial need or barrier. One long-term Plymouth Plymouth business had their heating and air go out during COVID. And had to change their business model entirely to stay afloat with the COVID restrictions that were, uh, they were getting from public health. And therefore, the city no longer receives top funds from this business. However, if they had heat and air, their business would likely go back to their previous business model. And you can tie that back to COVID by having fresh air, um, just like they do with most of the public buildings. Um, other businesses had a hard time retaining employees. And could have used these funds to retain them. Um, all had staffing issues or issues with retrofitting their, uh, buildings to stay open during COVID. Uh, my suggestion to the council is that rather than divert these funds to the firehouse repairs, the city create a Plymouth Business Relief Forgivable Loan Program. In an effort to retain or incentivize jobs and stabilize local businesses from COVID now and in the future. And I would like to see forgivable loans, uh, with a maximum amount of twenty thousand dollars or other amounts agreed upon. Um, for those businesses that can demonstrate a need that can be tied back to COVID. And will stay in business for a set amount of time after receiving the funds, uh, that are then forgiven after that time. This would require no amendment to the current agreement, as I understand. I also suggest the city look back through its records and reimburse or remove liens made on properties for utility bills. That could have been forgiven due to the fifty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars available. Under the subsistence and COVID nineteen assistance program. So if the city wants to redirect funds, I suggest making an amendment that allows for any leftover funds not applied to local businesses be spent on improvements. To public facilities such as parks to provide outdoor fitness and social space where insufficient facilities. Are available to support social distancing guidelines, which is an allowable activity under this grant. A document titled Using CDBG and CDBG dash CB. To support pandemic recovery was drafted in April two thousand twenty-one. And it states that construction of public improvements such as reconstruction of degraded water lines is an allowable activity. There are many options available to the city to utilize, should an amendment be needed, that are more beneficial to the residents than the fire station repair. And I I personally would like to hear what is needing repair at the firehouse that costs two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It was my understanding that AFPD was required by contract to maintain the city building and is, I don't know if that's true, but I I've heard that that is true. So to reiterate, I request that the funds be used as initially awarded. And there be created a business relief forgivable loan program as described previously. We would volunteer to and like to see the city take the time to call its businesses. And everyone that I spoke to was basically had very small wants that would, and they were all different. That that would really have made a difference to their business and let them actually stay open. So we would volunteer to and like to see the city take the time to call its businesses and let them know that funds are available. And seek their input for what needs each business has that can be tied back to COVID. And there are tiebacks. It's been, um, we've been writing them out and it is doable. And we'd like to assist them with that need. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to thank.
Please try, keep it three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for making that caution to me and not to anyone else that is speaking today. Um, I consider that to be discriminatory. I'd like to thank the city council for continuing the action on this item until a public hearing can be scheduled. I furthermore would like to thank council member Kleinfelter for all of the time and effort. She personally invested to get these grants in the first place and to try to get the city to move forward on them. I don't think anyone understands the amount of commitment and effort that she has put in to trying to get these grants to move forward. I would like to, um, I think Amy Gomes captured the concerns very well. Um, with all due respect to council member McLaughlin, um, he is incorrect when he said the Facebook posts. Um, classer ineligible. Amy and I have done a lot of research and that research consisted of looking at other jurisdictions eligible activities. Placer County right now is offering grants and loans to small businesses. And they allow for inventory, cost of goods relevant to business operation, payroll, employer provided benefits. Contract later supplies, packaging, shipping and postage, advertising, marketing, it goes on and on and on. Anything to do with working capital and operating expenses. And I think it's important to note, because I haven't heard it. That this isn't just about responding to the impacts that businesses had. It's about allowing those businesses to prepare for, respond to and prevent future impacts as well related to the COVID. In case another, um, period comes in where we have a lockdown or another pandemic starts. Um, we, as Amy said, we did, um, we have provided or developed. Um, the, um, tiebacks on all of the activities, many of them came from other jurisdictions. Um, and so Amy and I would like to volunteer to the city. Um, to meet with any designated members of the city council and or staff. To help them research and develop the potential programs that do tie back to COVID. To allow these grants to move forward to support the small businesses and residents that they were originally intended to do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Can we move on?
Okay, can I speak for a minute?
Sure.
I haven't yet, um. I was mayor in two thousand twenty and this all, and I will say that. It's a big ball of confusion. Yeah, I mean, the whole thing, I I know when our business was getting grant monies for the business, it's a big ball of confusion. We need an outside source. Um, I also think, and I'll put it on record right now, that we had a city manager that would do the fake it till you make it. Um, thing and he he basically faked it until and he didn't make it. Um. I gotta say, one of the most positive things I've seen tonight is Ms. Gomes and Ms. Marino working together. That shows totally different political viewpoints can get shit done, and I'm gonna put it that way. Um, with what they've done at the school district and everything else, that's what our community needs to start doing. Um, I know when we initially talked about these grants and I would sit down and talk with our previous city manager. The big goal was that this money go back to businesses to help these small businesses stay afloat. And we've lost some of them, small businesses. So I have to say I'm in total agreement with them. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Can we go to the city manager's report, please?
I think that we should have a bit of a discussion about how we carry this.
Oh.
Agenda I work over to the next meeting. And how we frame the public hearing. Um, are we going to be open to other ideas? Or are we going to have a public hearing that only offers? One outcome?
And and I think a piece that would be important is, um, you know, because I know that. You know, my my statement a few moments ago about what was being denied, I mean, that was from. HCD, you know, commenting on that, so I'd like to, you know, ask the city manager whether this evening or certainly part of. The information preparing for the public hearing, what projects have been proposed to HCD that they denied? And why did they deny it? Just so we have, you know, the specific understanding of, you know, where the where the rails, um, exist on this.
I think, uh. My name, Commissioner Clapoff made an excellent, uh, statement when he said, we're we're running out of time. And we we break this money up into about ten different pieces and have to go out and get all these. Uh, these, uh, various, uh, uh, aspects, uh. Uh, assigned and paid for, we're we're gonna run, we're gonna run out of here. This is, it's June first already. So I think that's one of the biggest stumbling blocks we're gonna have. What what do you think, uh, city manager? Is there enough enough days in the year to go out and do all these wonderful things that that have been proposed tonight?
With everything that is going on, it will be very difficult.
How about impossible? Okay, I guess it's.
I I do need direction because, um. With HCD, we're already behind the eight ball and I. I have a phone appointment to talk with HCD tomorrow about. The conversation that I we have tonight. And I do need direction on how, like council member Kleinfert said. I need direction on how to frame the public hearing notice on which direction the council. Wants to go forward in some way, shape, form on the grants. Is it possible to, as a part of your conversation with HCD? To have the discussion of no amendment except for the allowable timeframes amendment. And to implement what? We should have implemented in twenty twenty-two. Is that, could that be part of the conversation?
Of course, and would you like to join the call?
Okay.
I I have a question because I wanna make sure it gets asked. Have you spoken with HCD directly? Uh, I guess Lauren about the funding eligibility of some of the things that have been raised tonight. Um, I think the council needs to hear if you have what they've ruled outside, inside bounds. To me, that seems a pretty important thing to get out there.
When we, when I talked to Lauren, she said, um, that. Other cities have done parks, but the specifics have to be just so. And she could help with the writing of it, but it's it's difficult depending on how your park is structured. And she said, I've seen Plymouth's park and it would be hard pressed to fit your park into that. Um, she initially recommended the fire station. I didn't come up with that idea. Um. She, we talked about, um, infrastructure. On any public building that could be used to house. Patients in a medical emergency. Um, so Lodge Hill. And, um, we talked about how that really wasn't big enough and how the hill to get up is not really conducive to that. And we talked about. Um. We talked about this building and we talked about. That the structure isn't very good. And she said she probably could make this building work, but it would be a harder sell than the fire station. She said sticking with the original grants would be very difficult. And that was the tone of our conversation last week. Um, it, when all of this was going on, was in the height of COVID. If you look at the four offices behind you, the city of Plymouth is for those grant purposes. A business. And all of this work could have been reimbursed through this program. So could have all of the extra things that grocery stores, restaurants. Had to purchase or lose money or retain an employee. That was necessary for their business out of this program. So ju- we did not do our job. Of identifying, of identifying what is a grant express, uh, uh, expense. And keeping those records. I was not even afforded the opportunity to see a hard copy of these grants. When I asked for them, because they couldn't find them, which I'm appalled by. But. I was able to get HCD to not do the amendment before and extend our timeframe out. And we still didn't get this done, which started my first conversation. Which started my first conversation. That was in September of two thousand twenty-two. So this isn't, this isn't new information. Uh, we have got to do a better job.
I, I, I am just gonna kind of uh reiterate something that Keith brought up and um that as I'm learning about all of this and, and what has gone on for the last couple of years. Um, Councilmember Kleinfelter, you did have the privilege to be the mayor, which I can relate to that being a privilege. However, you had the unfortunate privilege of working with five city managers and um.
I don't go with all unfortunate, but.
Well, the, the fa- the fact that there wasn't that consistency. Um, again, I, I, I'm, I'm grateful to our current city manager in a phrase that, that Keith used, we um had a a city manager who I think was responsible for so much of this, who had the mindset of fake it till you make it. And I think a lot of of the problems that we're having now are because of that. And I, I guess I just felt the need to get that out there. Um. That I think now we're trying to clean up this mess. So when I hear, you know, we and um not necessarily we, but the fake it till you make it previous city manager. Okay, thank you.
We certainly have a new we. Then back in two thousand twenty, uh. I, I think, I think we're out of the we're quickly out of the excuse business. We have to get into what to do business and and I just, I'll repeat it, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clapper, I think, but in, in a ver- very, very strong and, and very accurate words, this is, this money's gonna go away fast. We, we need to concentrate on something. I, I personally, I'm only one vote. I, I like, I like the uh the fire station. It, it, it needs it. Uh, you, you, we all, you mentioned City Hall, the City Hall, that, that money wouldn't go very far here, this, this, this place. And it, it'll go a long ways to that, that fire station, I, I believe. And uh, it, it's, it's, it's an important aspect of the whole, the whole city. It, and I think it's um uh, we'll see what happens. I mean, I, I think it's obvious we're gonna have to put it out to public uh comments and, and, and and we'll see what comes back. I, I think I know it's gonna come back, that's all right. Anyway, um, um. I keep try, trying to get out of the subject, but is there any more? Are we, are we done with this?
Can, can I just say one more thing real quick? I think um, you know, a couple of pieces that are that I'd like to see, you know, um, Margaret with your, with your call with HCD is if, if we were to go down and, and leave the grant the way it is, I mean, what is our, our likelihood of success? What would be involved, right? We have to understand the, you know, the scope, the impact, the likelihood of success as part of that risk management um in decision-making process, but um that, you know, aside from that, I think it, it's also important to note that, you know, the fire station is, um, you know, city-owned property. And the contract with the AFPD states that they would complete any maintenance or repairs up to five hundred dollars. Anything above five hundred dollars comes back to the city. Um, which is, you know, obviously a problematic piece. And um, I know that there was a, a tour completed at the end of last calendar year with, you know, Mayor Akron, and I believe Vice Mayor Sim both attended. And uh, there's, there's some significant work that needs to be done just for the health and welfare of the men and women working out of that facility, much less any, you know, functionality piece. But I'm not saying that's more or less important in, than supporting our businesses, but we need to set ourselves up for um, success in making sure that this is gonna be something that we can achieve in the timeframe that we have. So that is all, and I think I've beaten that one up.
Okay, I'm gonna, just so we can close this conversation out, because it's gonna be a continued conversation. I would suggest that after the call tomorrow, if Margaret and I feel it's warranted, then we contact the mayor and for some time between this meeting and the next meeting, schedule a special meeting to hone in on what that public hearing at the next regular meeting would be. Is that a solution?
I love it.
Sounds good. Yep, there is. Good enough. You, you have a, a report, Margaret?
Right.
Okay, so, oh yeah, what do we need to? Somebody wanna move to put five point five on a future agenda? Okay, seven point three, seven point three, pardon.
Right now.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I pulled this agenda item because my concern is always about procedure and precedent. And I don't think that ratifying a mistake, even though the dollar figure is not huge, sends any kind of a message that of how we do things. I think the proper organization of this would have been for city manager to contact Comcast and say this wasn't done properly. Can we have a quick meeting and go over this so it's done in the right manner? If it was over the five thousand dollars, then that would come to the council, but that would have cleaned up this mess. And I do, first of all, employees don't get to make these kinds of mistakes. And second of all, let's not, let's not make another mistake by ma- making their mistake okay.
May- may I just say something? I'll, I'll fall on my sword on this one. I, Margaret called me and she said, you know, oh, fill in the blank. I just found out what happened. And I said, well, we don't wanna bury it. We should bring it to the council. Now, I di- it didn't occur to me that I thought, I just assumed it was locked and loaded, you know, set, set in stone, and maybe it, maybe it isn't. I don't know. I don't think we, I don't, we didn't have the conversation, cause I just told Margaret, well, let's at least bring it to the council so that it can be ratified. And that at least sends the message that she takes, you know, trying to do the right thing seriously, and it wasn't, wasn't an attempt to bury it, but you know, going forward, like I said, it didn't occur to me when Margaret called me to suggest reaching out to Comcast and seeing if they can unwind it or undo the contract. Like I said, my assumption was it was, it was locked and loaded and um, you know, maybe, maybe it wasn't. So I'll just say that bluntly.
Do you think there's a possibility, especially given that we might have a special meeting and the two-week meeting, to have a conversation with Comcast and um have them issue a new contract that would be executed properly?
I will give them a call tomorrow. While you're at it, why don't you ask them that they can reduce it by thirty-six dollars? I will try to negotiate some more. Um, I, I did wanna say, Councilmember Kleinfelter, um, your, your points with me are, are very well taken. And um, I don't, I, I agree with you. Um. But I just wanna offer this as food for thought. Um. Our city staff, including our city manager, has a lot going on. Could we? Again, lesson learned from this one, for the sake of taking one thing off our city manager's plate. Um, that, that's, that, that's where my thought process is. But oh, uh, uh, I'm also only one vote.
I'm also one vote. So if some member of the council wishes to ratify this, I don't have a problem with that vote being taken, but I hold it for the reason that I felt it should be discussed, not just put on a consent agenda as an employee error.
And I, I think that was a wise move. So thank you for thinking about that.
And, and I know the, the city manager is currently working on a, a, you know, pretty extensive procurement policy as well, which will hopefully really provide some clear, you know, guidelines to staff to hopefully prevent some of this going forward as well. But um, I do know how much they're impacted and um and I know that it's been dealt with at a staff level, and I wouldn't expect this to happen again. Um, but uh, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Can we board us?
If you, yes, you need to stay public on it.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, I was wondering, I saw in the packet that the city had been paying for internet service on a vacant lot in Zimpano um, bridge. I was wondering if you could explain that.
We pay on the vacant lot, but it's actually to have internet service at the park. But the connection goes to the empty lot next door.
And, and isn't there something where um the irrigation system and uh, the pump station need internet access? Yes.
If, if I could ask Mr. Vice Mayor a follow-up to that?
Go ahead.
Um, it shows that they're disconnecting the internet service. So does that mean that the pump station in the park will no longer have internet service out there, or is the intent to renegotiate um, for service through another carrier or through another contract?
You have an answer?
I don't have an answer. Maybe city staff could follow up on that?
Did you hear the question, Margaret?
I don't have the answer off.
Okay, later. Be good for it. Right. We'll get back to you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Do we wanna put uh five point five back on the table and vote for it, or do we wanna leave it as?
It's on the table, so all you have to do is
Make, make a motion.
Make a motion.
You wanna make a motion?
I moved to ratify the contract with Comcast um, in the approximate amount of five thousand thirty-six dollars.
I second that. Vote, vote please. Roll call.
Yes. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
No.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Akron?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move on to your report, Margaret, finally.
So I just the, wanted to let the council know that the Public Works passed the pool inspection on Tuesday with no negative marks. Wood chips have been ordered for McGee Park to fill in the low level. The ambassadors have been given permission to paint the picket fence across the street at the park white. Uh, there's a group of amb- ambassadors going to rake the cemetery. Um, I did hear today that it looked pretty good, so I'm not sure how much they'll have to rake, but they've been given permission. Um, and we appreciate anything they do. And a group of ambassadors used weed eaters on an area near Veterans Park and did an outstanding job. Last weekend, my family and I attended the flea market downtown and smoke chasers at the fairgrounds and had a wonderful time. Um, Akra is doing bingo at Lodge Hill on the second Tuesday of the month at six thirty PM. Um. Come and try to beat me. Uh, Monday, again, I wanna let everyone know that the Memorial Day commemoration starts at nine o'clock at Veterans Park. And that's my report.
You sent out a message the other day about, about a leak in the city. Was, was that taken care of? Was it?
Yes, it was a leak down on Main Street
Uh-huh.
Um, in front of the school.
Okay.
And that was all taken care of.
Good. Did, did we do it, or did, did uh, the county do it, or is?
Um, AWA?
AWA.
Yeah, and we had to report that leak.
Sure. Thank you. Any uh, council members' reports?
I went to the flea market. My wife told me I couldn't bring anything home. She said, you could go look, don't bring anything home. So I just went to the flea market. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
I attended the in-person League of California Cities meeting in Redding. Long drive, people. Long drive.
Long drive.
Um, and it, this one was focusing, most of the day was focused on um, hardening in the wooey and hardening homes against wildfire. So they had um, experts there. I mean, I've been in sessions like that before, but it's always good. And one of the things I'd like, one of the things I was doing prior to COVID was I'd have, had several meetings with AFPD, the Sheriff's Office, and um, Cal Fire, all in the same room in an effort to come up with how to have a great town hall to talk about wildfire protection, to talk about, um, if you're told to evacuate, wh- what you're supposed to do, who you're supposed to listen to, um, all of those things. So what I was wondering, because we're kind of at the end of COVID, but we still have fire season twelve months a year, is if Councilmember McLaughlin would what, like to work with me in re-getting everybody back together and, and forming, forming this town hall?
Absolutely. Amen, sister. I'm in.
Uh, I, I have one item to report. Uh, uh, Margaret reached out to Caltrans last week. We hadn't heard much from them for the last uh, month or two, but anyway, they reported back to us that uh, the One Mile Project, the walking trail down Highway forty-nine that ends at the roundabout um, is, is still on course. It's uh, been delayed a little bit, but uh, uh, they're gonna go out, they're, they're, they're gonna advertise for the contractor uh, for uh, nine thirteen twenty-three. Uh, the award to the contractor will be twelve fourteen of twenty-three, and we'll be able to use the uh, that the public will be able, use the trail on six twenty-one twenty-four, which is just a little over a year. It'll be completed. Um, that was, thank you, Margaret, for getting ahold of them, and they're not easy to get ahold of. And uh, anyway, I think we're, we are on track. And we'll, we'll stay on top, top of it. Uh, anybody else have anything else?
Just the, the one item, I think, you know, Margaret touched on most of it. Um, the ambassadors have the work party for raking the cemetery on June seventh. So council members, ambassadors or not, um, we'll see you there, right? Ninety.
Uh, any council uh, requests for future agenda items?
Vice Mayor, fir- first I wanna share that last night I was able to go to um the uh, school board meeting where they recognized uh, a lot of students for their contributions with community service hours. And I had the pleasure of meeting one of the special education teachers, Bonnie Gale. Um, and her students were there because they have put in a lot of community service hours, and it was, and really, it, it was really a pleasure to see and meet a, a few of the students um, who have uh, apparently made some contributions to the city of Plymouth. So that was nice. And I wanna thank Mike Spinetta for letting me know about that. Otherwise, I, I wouldn't have known about that. So that was fun to be there. Um, future agenda items, um. I would like to edit, edit later time, um, uh, have a council discussion um, and look into developing a city council code of conduct. Um, there are plenty of, uh, samples from other cities. Seems to be something that's very common in cities. And, um, I think it would be, uh, a, a benefit to the entire city for us, for us to get something like that going. Um, and as we all move on, it, it, it will be there. Um, so I hope that, uh, we can have a future discussion about that. Um, I also, again, uh, would like to do, I'm going to refer to it as a state of the city report because I just don't know what else to call it. And, but I would ask that each council member, city staff, if there's particular, that, that this be something collaborative. And, excuse me, and then if there are certain topics, items, um, that should be included in that, um, uh, the, everybody's input would be helpful. Um, again, we've talked about the Memorial Day ceremony on Monday. Hope to see everybody there. Um, and then again, you know, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter for bringing to our attention the legislative issues, even though we're a small city. We are, we're still a city and these things are important to us. Um, there's already a, a couple of more of these action alerts that have come out just in the last couple of days. Um, there was something, um, we, we were asked to sign on to something. I'm, I'm drawing a blank. It's been a really long day. And we were asked to sign on to something, um, by May twenty-fourth, and I took the liberty as the mayor to sign on, and then I thought, uh-oh.
You can do it as yourself.
Okay, I did it as myself as the mayor. Thank you. Um, but if, if we can, uh, uh, I, I need some guidance on, on how to properly do this without stepping on anybody's toes. And, um,
And I can also talk to Charles about if there is any way to speed up the process of us receiving the alerts because I have noticed there isn't really a lot of time for us to react. So I'll have that conversation.
Thank you.
I wear steel toe boots and my clothes are fine.
What?
I wear steel toe boots and my boots, my clothes are fine.
Yeah, no, no, no. Mike, how about you?
You already asked.
Sorry, yep, nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. I guess at this point I'll close the, the meeting. And we'll go into a closed session.